... to an industry to locate, to expand in Wayne County. Mr. Smith, we have a special guest here to go over deciding before we have the public hearing.
Yes, we have Mike Haney. He's our existing industry specialist here. We also have Joanna Helms here today. So they're going to give you a real quick brief and some bullets on the project. Answer any questions you may have before you take public comment.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. Pleasure being here today.
Thank you for coming.
And it's also a pleasure that Georgia Pacific is considering an expansion at their Dudley Chip and Saw plant. The investment will be $90 million made over a three-year period. Twenty new jobs would be created with an average wage of $55,938, and our Wayne County average currently is at $33,289. We have competition for this project from the states of South Carolina, Arkansas, and Georgia. If this project is to locate in Wayne County, we would like the Commission to consider a grant back to Georgia Pacific of paid property taxes over a five-year period. The grant back would be only on the new investment and would average approximately 45 percent of the total new taxes collected by the county over the five-year period. Once the public hearing has been completed, Georgia Pacific Management will complete their due diligence and will announce their decision at a later date. And I do have, from their home office, Eric Abercrombie, Senior Manager for Communications and Public Affairs, that would like to make a statement.
Good afternoon, Board. My name is Eric Abercrombie. As I was introduced, my role with Georgia Pacific is Public Affairs for Building Products Division. Building Products has three different businesses under it. We have a chemicals business, a gypsum business, and wood products. Wood Products has four different subsets of that: oriented strand board, engineered wood products, lumber, or chip and saw, and plywood. Two of those businesses have facilities located nearby Dudley, plywood facility and lumber. I have joined with me some representatives from our local facility. We've got Chris Monroe. He is our Human Resources Manager for the complex. He covers both plywood and lumber. And then also Timmy Anderson, who is our plywood, our lumber plant manager. Those two facilities have been here in Dudley. The plywood has been formed here since the 1980s and lumber since 1973. Just to kind of give you some idea on the number of employees there, plywood employees, around 420 employees, and lumber approximately 100. Specifically, we're talking today about our lumber facility, and on an annual basis, compensation is around 2.5 million. So my role is to work with senior leadership for the operations and the business, so then I represent them in public interfacing for those operations. And so, want to share with you a little bit about how we look at investments on behalf of the company. We are, have a long-term view, a long-term approach on how we look at our investments. We definitely look at our market conditions, and that's really our guidestone on how we determine our investments. As everybody knows, the housing industry took a big hit. Our two facilities here in Dudley are tied to that, of course, because of wood products. But as we've been evaluating the market conditions, it's receiving a slow and steady recovery. And so our investments are to look at how we can be ready to meet our customer needs when they're ready to recover. So it's with appreciation on behalf of Georgia Pacific Senior Leadership that your consideration of this investment. We, as we evaluate all of our facilities in the southeast, we look to announce something soon. As I was driving down from Raleigh, from the airport, it was a lot of downpour, and as I ran through this area, the clouds opened. So hopefully, we'll have some good news to share with you once a decision's made. So thank you very much for your consideration. Appreciate it.
Thank you so much for your explanation. We will now open for our public hearing on this issue. Public hearing is now open. Any one would like to come and speak, for or against? Your name, your address, and your phone number, please.
Steve L. Herring, 349 Weaver Road, Goldsboro, RNC. Phone number, area code 919-689-2669. I worked at this Georgia Pacific plant when it was first being built. I worked there for a while helping build the place. And at that time, they said that the place would be, wouldn't be needed after 20 years. They'd have all the timber cut out from all around it, and wouldn't, and they would be able to close the plant after 20 years. It takes about 15, 20 years to grow another pine tree. So as they cut out from around, they brought in more. This plant has been a viable industry in our community, and I would be in favor of them expanding and us giving them a, in our county, giving them a tax break so that they can expand in this area, and that way, this plant should never close if they'll keep adjusting to the times. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Herring. Any others wish to speak? If not, the public hearing is now closed. In general, the Commissioners listen to the public, and we, of course, are privy to make a decision at the time of, after the public hearing. And if it's something that is needed by the user, the end-user, that is here, that needs immediate action, or generally, the Commissioners listen to the public, take what they've heard, and discuss it, and come back at the next meeting. But if there are any questions or concerns from the Commissioners at this time, I'll certainly open it up for any comments or any questions that you might have. Mr. Bell?
I'd like to offer a motion to approve.
Motion on the floor is to approve, to allow this expansion, the incentive to be granted, to allow the expansion. Any discussion?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Page?
Just to comment, I've had the opportunity to work with this company for many, many years. They've been a great corporate friend to Wayne County, have put a lot of our citizens to work, generated a lot of tax dollars in this community, and I will support this motion that Mr. Bell has made. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, if I might.
Mr. Parker?
I think if Mr. Bell would be agreeable to have the specifics that would be considered to authorize you as a chairman to sign an agreement with Georgia Pacific Wood Products LLC, and on the first year of the new thing, of the new equipment, which would be for the tax reporting year of 2014, the county would provide a grant of the amount of 20 percent of this new ad valorem property taxes paid to the county. For the tax reporting year of 2015, the grant would be for 40 percent of the taxes paid for the new, for this enterprise. For the year 2016, it would be 60 percent of the new ad valorem taxes paid. For the tax reporting year of 2017, it would be 50 percent. And for the tax reporting year of 2018, it would be 30 percent. As Mr. Haney said, that's about a 45 percent average over those years. I'd like to point out that this is not a tax refund. You do not have the authority in North Carolina to give a tax refund. This is, you are giving them a grant limited solely to the amount of taxes that they pay. It's not anything more than that, and they would pay it, they would then tell you what they've paid. You would go back, if Mr. Bell is willing to accept those figures, then that's what they would get as a grant, not a tax refund. And you have the authority to give, do that for them after having a public hearing, and if you decide that's what you want to do.
And we've had, we've had the public hearing, of course. Now, Mr. Bell?
Yes. Thank you, Mr. Parker. I meant to say all that, but...
You missed it. Mr. Chairman.
I agree with Mr. Parker, so my motion includes all that.
Yes, sir. I have a statement that I'm going to recognize, Mr. Acock and Mr. Mayo. My questioning was going to be what I heard on how you evaluate an area that you're in and the market. And I was waiting for the other part that you would evaluate, as was explained by Mr. Haney, that you did not evaluate or talk about was the tax that was explained by Mr. Haney in the property tax and the structure of the tax. And that was my concern and question, is that how was that tax to be laid out? And of course, that has just been laid out. But my question is, is that the land, property, building, and the equipment that is in the building, is it all-inclusive?
Just the new equipment?
Just the new equipment? Do you have an estimate of the cost, the dollar amount, of the equipment that you'll be putting in the addition? We have the 20 people that were exposed by that information that Mr. Haney brought, but there was no, there was no dollar amount brought to that information. So do you have a dollar amount? If it was, I just missed it, and I apologize.
It would be up to Georgia Pacific to make the decision, but what they are considering, and what they have told the county, is that it's up to $90 million of new equipment.
Up to $90 million immediately the first year? Or would it be in the fourth or fifth year, or over the period of time?
Over a period of time. They hope that if they're going to proceed with the project, that it would be within three years.
Within three years?
But they, if they proceed, they expect to purchase some of the new equipment and have it onboard this year, this calendar year.
Okay, this calendar year. And with that comment on the incentive, the last part was the taxes. And then on the equipment, the property tax, what rate would we start out at?
That property will be taxed just like anybody else's property taxed in Wayne County, depending on the tax rate set by the Board of Commissioners.
And what is that rate now?
66.65.
Now, you said that your board would go back, or you would go back with the information after you hear the public hearing, and your group would make the decision and get that, get back with us. Can I plead with you that we have a very good rate at 66.5 percent, and we think that that is the best rate that you can get? And we would very much appreciate you and your business. And we hope that, we have indicated that your business and other businesses that are looking at Wayne County know that we have that rate and the property rate in mind when we're looking for businesses like yours, sir. I think there are comments from both sides. I think it was Mr. Acock and Mr. Mayo. Mr. Acock?
You asked my question, Mr. Chairman. Now, I just want to clarify and make sure that the public knew that this was on the new equipment and not the existing equipment.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayo?
Yes. What, on the new equipment, what is the projected grant, if you will, that, that will accumulate? Is there a projection of what that total grant would be, approximately?
We've got, we did a spreadsheet. First of all, let me back up. First year's projected $10 million investment, second year 50 million, third year 30. And if you look at amount to the client at the, this is trying to consider depreciation and tax rate, if the tax rate were to stay at 66.65, it would be 886-plus thousand dollars back to the client. The amount received by the county in total, this is divided up, it's a total of 1.9 million. The county would get just over 1 million, the client gets 886,000. But it's a total collected of 1.9 million. We pay to the client 886,000, the county keeps just over 1 million.
Okay.
And obviously, that depends upon appreciation and the amount invested. That's why we use percentages and not a dollar amount. It's based on the investment.
Right. I just wanted the people that's listening, the citizens to know about what we're talking about.
We'll get back, we, we're in the black on this deal.
Okay, that's good.
And we appreciate it, GP.
Yes.
Any other questions or comments?
Just a quick call.
Mr. Dodery?
I welcome the expansion, look forward to it, and I'm awaiting your rapid decision. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Dodery. Any other questions? Mr. Kamara?
You may want to add one thing I don't know about hearing a lot. Year six and afterward, Mr. Chairperson, year six and afterward, taxes?
It's paid at 100 percent of the value, less appreciation, or?
Wanted the public to hear.
Any other questions? Mr. Bell has made a motion to accept this recommendation. All those in favor, raise your right hand. All those opposed, it is unanimous. We will get back to new business. Number three, meeting dates. Meeting dates, three months ago, or we, this board made a, voted to trial a morning and an evening meeting. This is our evening meeting. It's the third one in July. We'll have one more at the end of July, the last Tuesday. It'll be a morning meeting. That's the last one. Chairman? Are we, we're in the evening, July. This is first of July. Our last one will be, our last meeting will be a morning meeting, the last meeting in this month, is that correct?
Oh, morning meeting, I'm sorry.
So what we're doing then is, we're discussing now that our next meeting will be a morning meeting, and at that time, of course, it's a pleasure to the board to look at whether or not we'll continue to do what we're doing, or go back to where we were up three months ago and have all of our meetings in the mornings. There'll be one exception, that we generally have our public comment section at 6:00 in the evenings. We would just make sure that the public comments were back at 10:00. Mainly because of our evening meetings, we wanted those who could not attend our morning meetings to be able to attend, and if possible, have our public comments at 6:00 when we get off of work and not able to come in the morning. Of course, this is under new business, and we thought we would bring this up today so the media could pick it up, and of course, the public could pick it up. And our next meeting, our last meeting in July, would be a morning meeting, and of course, those could come and give us their comments, or if we had some comments between now and then, we would appreciate the public giving us their, their comments. Any comments from the board? Mr. Acock?
No, I don't have one.
Mr. Chairman? Mr. Mayo?
Well, I guess a year or so ago, I'm the one that brought up the idea about having evening meetings. And from what I've seen, this is the third meeting that we've had, I sort of been keeping a tally. When we have awards for employees and we have department heads that are involved in our meeting, after all those people leave, we have, other than, we have, we have regular citizens that come every single meeting almost, but we have actually had a net gain of about five citizens or people per meeting. So it's awfully inconvenient in a lot of cases for our staff to try to organize everything. And I, to be honest with you, I'm getting used to getting up early. It's, but in looking back, in looking back, I'm, Mr. Chairman, I'm going to make a motion at this time that we go back to morning meetings, have our, have our public time at 10:00 a.m. with, with a stipulation that the, that we still have a minimum of two meetings off-site, like we, like we had this year at Charles B. Acock and Southern Wayne, but have a minimum of two of those meetings, and have those in the evening. And that would be at the discretion of the board, but that our normal meetings go back permanently to morning meetings. And I make that in the form of a motion, Mr. Chairman.
Motion's on the floor that we go back to morning meetings, with two meetings to be held out in the county at the discretion of the board. Is there a date that you want to begin this? Would it be first meeting in August? Beginning, beginning in our first meeting in August?
Yes.
Any discussion? All those in favor, any discussion? Mr. Dodery?
I would hope, as we go forward, that if we do have some, I'm going to call this contentious items, that we consider having a public hearing on any contentious item in the evenings. Just discussion here. Now, I'm not amending the motion, I'm just saying that we consider that. If in fact, it would be inconvenient for people to attend and have their voices heard, I would hope that we would make every effort to accommodate them going forward. Just a point. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman? Mr. Page, and then Mr. Mayo?
Yeah, I was just going to agree with Mr. Dodery, but you could always call a special meeting for that kind of thing anyway. That did discretion of the chairman. Just my comment.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. That's why I had to make the motion to say a minimum of two meetings. See, sometimes, depending on where the public hearing's at, if it's close to Southern Wayne, for example, we may want to call a meeting at Southern Wayne. That's as convenient as you can get if it affects that area. So that's why my, my motion is, is that we consider a minimum of two per year. We can, we can call six if we want to, depending on what, what, what public time that we need. So I think we're covered when it comes to, let's go to the citizens, but we can go to them, we can go to them on their turf, if you will, at CBAcock or Southern Wayne or wherever. So that's, that's how I see it, Mr. Chairman.
Any other discussion? All those in favor of the motion, raise your hand. All those opposed, it's unanimous. We have two other items under new business before we have public comments. Ms. Joanna Helms with the Wayne County Development Alliance, which at this time would come up and give a report, please, of her trip. We'll have public comments at 6:00, and then just as soon as we finish with public comments, which generally take about eight to 12 minutes, we'll have our presentation by Mr. Jimmy Hyatt with Hyatt and Associates.
Mr. Chairman, can we, I'm sorry. We're just trying to confirm, since on the DVD, we use that, that two-hour mark, need to, so if we could hit the, so I'm trying to find out about a break.
You need to break after public comments.
After public comments, we need a break.
After public comments?
So we don't overdo the DVD.
Public comments will be at 6:00, and they last four minutes a person, and will generally run eight, 12 minutes or so. And then we'll have with Mr. Jimmy Hyatt with Hyatt and Associates to go over the school plans for Grantham that were passed out at last Tuesday's meeting. Ms. Samson?
Okay, so I'll talk real fast. I shall do that anyway, it's supposed to be, right? Okay. So yes, the last week, the NCEDA, which is the North Carolina Economic Developers Association, had their annual conference in Wrightsville Beach, and it's the professional development group for all economic developers and associated industries across the state. And so we did go down there and meet. It was a good two-day productive meeting, and I'm just going to give you a few highlights of some of the speakers and the topics. I'll give you just a broad perspective due to time, and also tell you that NCEDA does post all of the speakers' comments, slides, PowerPoints on their website, so I'd be glad to forward you any information that might pique your interest today, and then you can read further on it in your leisure. So beginning on day one, we had an opening business session, it's just some business of the NCEDA organization itself, whereby we give updates on legislative news, conferences, and development seminars across the year, and just the general business of NCEDA. So that's kind of boilerplate stuff. Then we went right into a Department of Commerce update. We did have Secretary Sharon Decker with us, and she gave a pretty broad perspective as well of just some of the transitioning that's going on at the Department of Commerce, as you know, looking to take it to a public-private organization. So she gave a little insight into some of the things that they've been looking into, the transition itself, the workforce, the workforce of the Department of Commerce, timetables, some outcomes and goals that they have. So she kind of went over that in a broad sweep, because no decisions have actually been made yet, they're still looking into that. But the one thing that she discussed that was very interesting was talking about the eight new prosperity zones. eight new prosperity zones that they'll be establishing across the state. And these prosperity zones will be for the purpose of operations and planning, not for marketing, operations and planning. But these eight prosperity zones, so Wayne County will be in, you know, prosperity zone number two or three, who knows? But they'll have a representative from Commerce, from Transportation and from DNR in all of those prosperity zones. So that if issues come up relating to operations of the state or of that prosperity zone or regarding transportation or planning, that they'll have the right people on the table right there in that, that region, that zone, so they can discuss it and move on. So more to come on that, but she just kind of alluded to that was coming, coming down the pipe. I had a presenter on entrepreneurial development, a gentleman from a company called Jumpstart Inc. out of Cleveland, Ohio, and it was just giving an overview of some of the initiatives they've done with entrepreneurial development and how we could maybe piggyback on some of that in North Carolina, looking at direct investment, management of incubators and some different initiatives like that. So that was just for information purposes, to see if that's something that we want to engage this company in for North Carolina. And then day two started with some more NCEDA business. We had nominating committees and all that kind of stuff. Again, more administrative kind of thing. But next we had a Department of Transportation update. We did have Secretary Tony Teta with us to give an update. And he specifically spoke to the new strategic mobility formula that you've probably heard him talk about. But this is basically a new way to fund projects and to prioritize projects across the state in transportation. In the more metro areas, the purpose will be to ease congestion and to enhance safety. And the more rural areas or small towns, it will be ways to improve the access to medical services, education, economic centers and recreation. It will all be data-driven and local input. All modes will compete for the funding, so it's not going to be automatic that highways get this much and rail gets this much. All modes will compete for those same dollars. He broke it down into the, the levels that the, the funding will be dispatched into, if you will. And of course, that's how it is now at state, region, when we have those divisions of the state DOT. So then he went down even further and talked about percentages and the dollars and so it starts getting really detailed. So I don't have all those numbers, but if you look at the report, you can see those. The current plan in transportation, the current 10-year plan projects that they will have about 175 jo, 175 projects at DOT over the next 10 years and that will create about 174 new jobs. This new formula, this new mobility strategic formula projects that they will have at least 260 projects and create over 240,000 new jobs. So that's a great economic number there. This new formula is projected to be implemented by July 2015. So we got still two years to get this all ironed out. Secretary Teta, I'm sure, has got lots of smart folks he's working with to get this all ironed out. But it was just kind of an overview of what's to come for transportation. Next, we had a presentation on opportunities with offshore drilling. We had a person there from the American Petroleum Institute and also a gentleman there from the Mobile, Alabama Chamber of Commerce. And I had to step out at this presentation because I was a facilitator for the upcoming session and so I had to get my speakers ready. So I don't know what they talked about in that one, but I'm sure we'll have a PowerPoint that we can refer to you. And also, Mike was also there, but he had to step out for a conference call. So we are still waiting to hear those opportunities in offshore drilling because we didn't get that during the session. But again, it'll be online and we can look at it later. The second to last topic on that second day was a presentation on public-private partnerships. And we had with us the Honorable Pat Gott, I think it's pronounced Gottschalk, but he is the former Secretary for Economic Development in the state of Virginia. And as you know, the Virginia model is one that we've looked at because they have gone public-private for years and have been very successful in their economic development efforts at the state level. So he spoke a lot about their board organization, their state economic development board organization, the governor appointees to that, the legislative appointees to that, and also, you know, who reports, the reporting structure. So he talked about that. And then Sharon Decker came back and, and responded to that. She was actually there with us for two full days, so that was great to have our Secretary of Commerce there with us. But she responded back and just asked a few questions and gave a few remarks about the Virginia model and how some of those things might or might not work in North Carolina. And last but not least, you know, this is where you always hate to be if you're a presenter or facilitator, you don't want to be the last panel on the last day, but that's where they put us. But I actually facilitated a panel on work-ready communities. And I got to tell you that amazingly, most of the audience stayed up until the very end of the conference. And we had, and on that panel, Kathy Howard from North Carolina's Eastern Region who kind of gave the nuts and bolts of the work-ready communities. We had Dr. Kay Albertson from our own Wayne Community College. I talked about how Wayne County was the first to receive the work-ready community certificate and all that went into that with the schools and the industries and the county. And then we had Mary Paramore, who was the Director of Business Industry at Pitt Community College. And she gave the story from Pitt County's perspective. So that was a great panel, it was very well received. You all know all about work-ready communities, so I won't go into that. But it was a good two-day conference and it's, it's a great organization to be a part of and we're just pleased that we were able to attend. And like I said, this will all be online and I can direct you to any information if you need it. Wow, that was good. I did great, all right.
Any questions for Ms. Samson? She has a wealth of information.
I'm tired, I'm going to sit down.
I had a quick question.
Oh, sorry.
Mr. Daughery.
Has it been determined what economic zone or prosperity zone that Wayne County would be in?
I don't think they've given us a number, but I think we're, it's going to be very close to the partnership that we're in now. Because the seven regional partnerships, as you know, are being dissolved. Some of them are staying on with private dollars, but the prosperity zone have yet to be determined.
And then the, my other question, follow-up on that, was the, the eastern region evidently is switching over to a public-private
Correct.
...organization. And, you know, my concern of that is the funding and, and how they're going to sustain themselves because I think you would agree, we need to keep them operating.
Absolutely.
And I hope that, you know, there's a good bit of, of study in regards to how they're going to bring in the revenues to sustain themselves.
That, that is going on right now. As you know, there is a, most likely, the seven regional partnerships, the seven regional partnerships will be dissolved. However, several of them are already privately funded. Those that are public-private funded or all publicly funded are looking to gather private dollars in their region. And the eastern region is doing that right now. They're doing a feasibility study and to see how they can fund it from a private equity standpoint. And the state's going to give the partnerships those six months to a year to transition. So no one's just getting thrown out the door immediately.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Pay.
Just a request, that Jumpstart thing, I would like to be directed, I'd like to take a look at that.
Okay.
Jumpstart?
Yes.
What you talked about, I'd like to be directed, I'd like to take a look at it.
Okay. It's a, it's a neat model, I'll send that information to you. Sure.
Mr. Mayor.
Just as a matter of information, you're fine. I was going to address, you know, Commissioner Bell and I sit on the Eastern Region Board and Ms. Helms is right, that's exactly what we're looking at doing, getting, sort of like we do with Impact Wayne here in Wayne County, have businesses and private individuals and probably change, probably change our niche, if you will, as to what we're doing. But I do know this, I do know that there's been a lot of communications with Secretary Decker about the eastern region still being a part of the Pat McCroy revision of economic development. So it's, it's not a dead issue, it's just the fact that we've got to get to some point where people know where they're at and we're not there yet. But Mr. Bell and I are sitting on that board and we've got a meeting next week, I believe. So we're, we're staying on top of it.
Thank you. Any other comments? At this time, it's 6:00 and it's time for public comments. So if you would, come to the podium in your name and your phone number and your address and you have four minutes.
My name is Elizabeth Franklin, 2249 O'Berry Road, Mount Olive. My phone number is 919-689-2774. First of all, I have to say that y'all intimidate me because I usually speak to five-year-olds, okay? So this is not, you guys are like, oh, nervous. Anyway, I live in the Grantham community, I teach at Grantham. I, first of all, want to say thank you to Mr. Keen and Mr. Pay for responding to my email that I sent. That means a lot to me as a citizen. I want to say thank you for exceeding our expectations as to build an elementary and a middle school. I was pleased with that. We, as a community, and I've spoken to several community members, want what's best for our students. And I know you guys want what's best for our students. And the surrounding communities, because the other communities are going to be affected just as much as Grantham is because students from other areas are going to come to our school. So I guess my concern is the school board asked for a certain amount and another amount was in the paper. So I, I just want to know where the funding is going to come from because I don't want any other school in the commu, in our county to go without what they need. Being a teacher, teaching small children, I don't want anybody left out, you know? So that's my concern. And I just want to know how the two boards can work together to achieve the goal that is before us and that is to provide our students with a safe, healthy, technology-savvy environment so they can go out and be 21st century learners and be competitive in the workforce. So I thank you for letting me speak and I'm not so nervous now, but I appreciate what the Board of Education is doing, I appreciate what you, the Board, county commissioners are doing, and I just want to say thank you.
Tom Drew, P.O., Box 587, Goldsboro, 27533. Do recognize democracy as the most viable governmental system to secure and advance world peace via the forum. All philosophies and religions may advance the most enlightening and merciful teachings that we may know peace via the forum. To advance a viable industry in Wayne County in the world is to advance education, significantly education democracy that's a threat to national, international security. To do so is to advance a viable forum, what is recognized as the topic in education democracy, a question to secure education democracy worldwide. Three emails were sent yesterday, one was a error containing 427. a copy of what you get when you Google this, open letter to all at Stanford care political stamp, science majors at Stanford University. If you Google that, it was cut and pasted by someone unknown to me and ends up at a page bin site. Missing from that is a two-page attachment where I initiated this forum at classmates.com. Also sent the email containing this information that's there right now, that's classmates.com. You go to Baldwin High School, Pittsburgh, PA, class of 72, look up Tom Drew, my personal profile bulletin board. There I'm addressing the history and future of this forum, addressing the question first formulated in May of '03, where we would in Iraqi go to get the finest education and democracy? What college/university incentive learning that deserves and would welcome recognition as such? That question was first published to initiate the forum October 5th of '03 in Malibu, New York City. They sponsored this online efforts to secure this forum. It was initiated at classmates, October 23rd of '11, addressed within need to build at Stanford University, take a ad out, where as that question had been shared January 11th with V. N. Ambassador at Stanford, Carl Ackenberg. And that is answering the taped interview, addressed as a generalization. The question requires a specific, I still saw it. Initiating this forum at classmates, addressed in terms of need to take ad at Stanford University. Pass word, John Carl, I'm speaking from Carl Castle, P. S. Radio, take copy. Roger at Stanford, Santa Bella County, Roger at Stanford, Chelsea Clinton, Gary Pick, President Chief Executive Officer, American Press Association, M. P. O. III, Steve Bowley, Brian Green, Paul Drummer, John L. Henson, President of Stanford University, Chief Executive Officer, Research, Colonel Park and Base Commander, Senator Johnson. Do they recognize that question as relevant and welcome their answers, opinions, questions or suggestions on that? There's a lot to say in these three minutes, we just about, those emails, that information has been emailed to the public, here are the commissioners, here are the county manager and the Board of Education's Chief, Chief Public Information Officer. I hope to have it on the library, the Wayne County Public, on shelf of Wayne County Public Library as reports 667.
Thank you so much. Any others wish to speak?
Steve L. Herring, 349 Weaver Road, Goldsboro, NC, 27530. Air code 919-689-2669. Gentlemen, it has been the given norm that most cities grow towards the west unless there's an obstructive barrier such as a river or a bayou or whatever. In that case, the city will, limits will go up and to the river and remain there for quite some time for whatever jumps the river. After it jumps the river, the city will protrude towards the west as a general norm. Goldsboro city limits has even controlled some land on the other side of the river now. We've got facilities on the other side of the river in this county now. We've got laundromats, we've got eating places, we've got two supermarkets over there and we've got about all the facilities we need. This county is getting ready to start moving west. And in doing so, we need a new school at Grantham. It's been the school built when they consolidated the schools. They planned on building one south, one east, one north. And the Rosewood School didn't elect to solid, consolidate, so they were the western school. They, they progressed. That community has really progressed since they kept their high school. They elected not to consolidate, to keep their high school. Grantham School is in the position now for this county to start moving west beyond the river. And so I would like very much for the school board to take y'all's advice and put a K through eight at Grantham on that 40 acres. If they, I went to high school on 18 acres, started in the sixth grade, right on up through high school on 18 acres, to be sure they can get a K through eight on eight acres, 40 acres, 40-some acres. And have room for drainage field too. If we'd send the inspectors out there and let them test that soil, I think it'd be appropriate for a drain field. It'd be a lot better soil for a drain field than what Grantham has got now. So I don't see no reason why we couldn't have a K through eight, as y'all have suggested, at the new 40-some acre tract. And then maybe later, this old tract could be used for a high school and we could get our high school back. It's been a viable asset to the community, to, it was a viable asset to have the high school there. And I'd like to see it come back. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Herring. Any others?
Good afternoon, Representative John Bell, 501 Holland Hill Drive, Goldsboro, North Carolina, 919-344-633. Goldsboro, North Carolina, 919-344-6324. And first of all, I bring you greetings from Raleigh. I wish we had one of these calendars up in Raleigh. I think we'd be done by now if we had one of these. But we are in skeleton session this week on the House side. The Senate is still in full session. And this is the first time I've had the opportunity to come and address the county commissioners at a local meeting. With that said, I want to thank you for everything that you've done to making my job easier in Raleigh. For those who are watching and listening on streaming live and on the TV later on, District 10 covers from Craven, Green, Lenore, and Wayne County in the northern part and the western side of Wayne County. And each one of you not only has reached out to me, but in turn, I've been able to reach out to you by lines of communication, whether it be phone calls, emails, lunch, coming to the General Assembly. But I do appreciate, as a freshman legislator, it's nice to know that the Board of Commissioners has your back in Raleigh. And when you need things, I want to thank you for your resolutions, whether it be on some of the economic development projects we've got going on. You've attended meetings there. You showed your support when resolutions were needed to help support Charles B. Acock Birthplace. When resolutions were needed to get funds for Highway 795, you stepped up to the plate. And on behalf of the Wayne County delegation, I do appreciate that. A perfect example of how we've all worked together was just about four weeks ago, something that came on board back in 2012 when we realized that wind turbines were going to put our Seymour Johnson Air Force Base at risk. And after being elected in November, it became the mission of Wayne County delegation to make sure that our military base was safe and sound. And under your leadership, you came to Raleigh. You took part in what went on. Chairman Keen and I had outstanding conversations back and forth. He was ready to go at a moment's notice. But it wasn't just our county commissioners. It was our House members, Representative Jimmy Dixon, Representative Larry Bell. It was our Senator, Senator Don Davidson, Senator Page. It was our friends at Cherry Point. It was our Chamber of Commerce, our small business owners in the county, our city of Goldsboro, and then, of course, our military affairs came together, not as Republicans, Democrats, but came together as a community and rallied around that. And because of that, I can stand here today and say not only is House Bill 484 law, but it actually protects our military base going forward, which is, you know, as many of you know, is a $52 billion economic engine here in the state of North Carolina that we need to protect. And so I want to thank you for that. I want to thank you for your work. I support what you're doing. And in turn, I want you to support me. I know that you have a voice in Raleigh. You have a friend in Raleigh. And I look forward to continuing to open lines of communication and working with you, hopefully for the next number of years. I have to run for reelection every two years. Y'all have a cushion for four. But I look forward to working with you in the future. And thank you very much. And thank you.
Thank you, Representative Bell. You've been working very hard. We appreciate you taking your time to come here and sit with us tonight. Any others wish to speak? If not, the public comment is closed. We will take five minutes to change out the DVD. And then we'll allow our Mr. Jimmy Hyatt to give us a...